Don't you need to ask all of us?
You have to ask all of us.
I was just gonna say.
You can't just have a side deal with a clerk.
We are, Councilor Lane's running a little late. He's been asleep, so waiting for Councilor Cameron to have a seat.
That's good time, Mark.
Good evening, everyone. We have a member of the community we should remember tonight, Joan Matthews. She was the wife of the former Mayor Peter Matthews for almost 50 years. She passed away recently at the age of 95, so let's keep her in our thoughts along with the Matthews family. And I'd be remiss if I didn't say we should keep the people of Israel in our thoughts this evening after this long horrible week. And reach out to your Jewish friends in the Newburyport community. I think it would be good for them to know that we all are thinking about them and let them know that we're here with them as well. A moment of silence, please. Thank you. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
All right.
No, I got it.
There we go. Sure.
All right. Clerk Jones, if you would call the roll, please.
I'd be happy to, for the meeting of 10:13, 2023.
Sixteen.
That's just what I meant. Roll call, Counselor Preston.
Present.
Counselor Vogel.
Present.
Counselor Wallace.
He is absent.
Counselor Wallace is absent, so is Counselor Dunham. Counselor Wright.
Present.
Counselor Zied.
Here.
Counselor Cameron.
Present.
Counselor Dunham, as we said, is absent. Counselor Khan.
Present.
Counselor Lane.
He is on his way.
Is he on his way? Absent or present? And Counsel McCauley?
Here.
And Counsel Shan.
Present.
We have a quorum.
All right, late files.
You'll see three late files on your desk. First is a Communication 509, which is an STRU letter from the Newburyport Homeowners Group. There's an Order 501, which is a resolution on the Israeli Hamas conflict. Order 502, which is a grant exception, acceptance, exceptance, excuse me, municipal road safety grant.
Motion to waive the rules and accept the late files.
Second.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Public comment. So, I see one hand online already, Rudy Hess. If there are others who would like to speak, please raise your hand now while the clerk tries not to trip on the cords to get to the board. All right, seeing only one hand in the Zoom audience, we can start with Mr. Hess. As we untangle ourselves here, Mr. Hess, and then Phil Barber. Those are the only two that'll be allowed to talk from the Zoom audience. So, Mr. Hess, I've unmuted you and allowed you to speak. Please give me your name, your address, and you have two minutes to speak.
All right, you guys hear me okay?
Yes.
My name is Rudy, Rudy Hess. I live on 1488 White Boulevard. And today I would like to take a moment for us to remember the brave servicemen that passed during the attack on the USS Liberty on June 8th, 1967. Israeli forces attacked the USS Liberty, killing 34 Navy personnel by air sea attacks. 174 naval service members were injured during the attack. Major of another intelligence agency identified as Agent Jiffy Pitt. However, Major Ernie Morantz said that the USS Liberty was armed US Navy intel operation. Israeli Air Forces and Navy fought with their feet on the tip anyway, making sure to part the supply boats specifically to prevent anyone from escaping. You know, I mean, I've entered from the radio chatter where the Israeli pilots asked the Israeli forces that this is an American ship used to want us to attack. The war for by that, yes sir, follow orders.
Point of order. I don't believe this is a Newburyport resident.
Moving to Mr. Phil Barber. Mr. Barber, I've allowed you to speak.
How are you doing today?
We can hear you, Mr. Barber. Name, address, in two minutes, please.
Oh, I live on 8814 White Boulevard. My name is.
There's Barber.
Sorry, I'm sorry, I don't believe you live in Newburyport. Thank you very much. All right. In-house. Josie Wisda, 24 Spring Street.
Do you mind if we come up together since mom and daughter?
Yes, please do.
Right on the top.
So, my name is Josie Wisda, and I live on 24 Spring Street in Newburyport. And I walk around a lot. A lot of strangers around. We're just here to talk about the rental unit issue. So, Josie's concern is that it creates, you know, we're not opposed to short-term rental units, but we're hoping that the council takes into account the incredible nature of our community and how it's such a great place to grow up, and that's one of the reasons we moved here. Because we saw when we looked at houses, kids out and about by themselves without parental supervision. And Josie does a lot of socializing in our neighborhood. We live on Spring Street, so we're right downtown. And we actually have a short-term rental unit right next door. Yeah, and so there are different people coming every two or three days. Sometimes they. We just wanted to come and express our feelings about how great this community is and how we hope that it doesn't change too much due to short-term rental units. So, I saw, I read through the document, and I noticed there was a high emphasis on parking. So, I wanted to make sure that some. More traffic. Increased fire risk is something I've known, I've heard is a problem, like when people don't know the fire laws and move fire pits onto decks and, like, they're on fire, because we live in a very close-knit community. Increased noise. And then, something I happened upon, because we happen to have an incident with a sex offender on our street, is that it's harder to keep track of sex offenders, because if they're registered, it's on the record that a short-term rental unit has no vetting for this. And anytime we've been patrons of a short-term rental unit, nobody has ever vetted us for anything, except the reviews. So, we just wanted to bring that to the attention of this group. And the other thing I wanted to talk about is, my mom lives in a Maine town that's been, they're having a lot of trouble with affordable housing because of short-term rental units. It's Rockland, Maine. And then, the other problem is exhibited by the Cape Cod situation. So, one of her friends moved up to Maine because she used to know everyone in her neighborhood in Cape Cod. And she said that with all the short-term rental units, I guess it's rampant there, she knows nobody now. So, like, when we help our neighbors, like, what do we help our neighbors with? Shoveling snow. Shoveling snow, if they're away. Getting their packages if they're away. Yeah, like, we'll take their packages in, or, like, the guy down the street who's having some health problems will help shovel. And you don't get that benefit if you have somebody who's just in there for a few days. So, do you have anything to add?
There's nothing wrong, Jews get 111, the Holocaust never happened, why are Jews on?
Oh, my God, he's still talking.
Still talking.
See, I found it.
I feel like this is a non-sequitur.
How does he get in, I wonder?
How do they know how to do that?
Thank you very much.
Sorry about that.
Thank you so much.
Can you click on the dots and disallow the speaking?
Yeah, remove. And this person is also not allowed to speak. I would.
Phil Barber.
Yeah, Phil Barber was the other one.
They may be changing names.
Yeah, delete the other one, too. I don't see Phil Barber.
Or leave them if they're not allowed to speak personally.
So, they're not allowed to speak. All right. Thank you both for speaking. Next is Dylan Thompson.
Hello, I'm Dylan Edward Thompson, residing at 25 Temple Street, apartment 510. And I've taken upon myself the mantle of the Horseman of Conquest from the Book of Revelations of the Holy Bible, heralding the imminent arrival of Jesus Christ on earth as the Messiah. I shall now sing a song regarding the general Brown School. Oh, the Brown School history's gem, where dreams and innovation stem. A tech hub born from this old golem. Dylan E.T., a visionary with passion bold and missionary, creating realms of science fairy. As BioFex leads the way, a tech hub grows where thinkers play. Tomorrow's world we will sway. Okay, that's it.
Thank you, Mr. Thompson.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
That is it for public comment tonight. Mayor's comment.
Dylan is a tough act to follow. Good evening. I guess I'll start by just saying thank you for mentioning Joanne Matthews tonight. She was just a wonderful woman. We had a spring meeting at the Heritage House where she lived, and she pulled me aside afterwards and brought me up to her place. And just, well, when I should say, she was really good friends with my family growing up, so my grandparents were two of her best friends. But she had a box full of just, I shared it with Clerk Jones, but a box full of just history of Newburyport that she shared with me. We had a great, great few minutes, and I'm glad, I'm certainly glad we had that now. But just a wonderful woman, so again heartfelt condolences to her family. Also, thank you for mentioning Israel. We just had a wonderful prayer service on Saturday. I know a lot of you were there, it was great to see you there on Market Square. You know, close to 300 people, I think, ended up showing up. But just a really wonderful job by Rabbi Alex Matthews. And just, you know, continue to keep, you know, the people of Israel in your thoughts as things continue and progress out there. I also want to thank the HRC for coming forward with their statement, you know, standing firmly against all kinds of hate, including antisemitism and Islamophobia, so here in Newburyport and abroad. So, I put a lot into the mayor's update tonight, so, I mean, this is online, I did email it to all of you. It's always on the mayor's page on the website, if you want to look at past mayor's updates as well. So, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna get too into the weeds with a lot of these things, but I did just want to get a lot of updates out there. Streets and sidewalks plan, we actually have a meeting tomorrow, so hopefully after that meeting tomorrow, we'll actually be able to send the updated plan to you to give you a little bit of a sneak peek. We are moving away from my kind of ward-specific 135, one-year, 246 plan the next year. You know, our new DPS Director Wayne Ammaral wanted to put his own stamp on it. We are gonna have a more citywide approach, but still addressing all the streets that you saw in the original plan. That hasn't changed. We're gonna have probably a really heavy year next year, and then you'll see that tapered out. But what I like about the plan is, is that he really is taking a thoughtful approach to the finances involved. So, you're really gonna get to see how each ward gets broken down, how each street gets broken down. And I don't think we did that in the original plan to the thoroughness that Wayne has done. So, after our meeting tomorrow, we'll get that out. But we're excited that that should inform your, the $6 million bond that's currently in the Budget and Finance Committee, but that should inform that conversation moving forward, so we're excited about that. We're also gonna pass along, probably, maybe, hopefully at the same time, but if not, we'll eventually pass along a sidewalks and traffic and safety project plan as well. So, this will be kind of separate from what we're gonna be targeting the bond for. This is what we're targeting that line item in the budget for, that we've slowly been increasing. Well, I'm sure we'll ask for another increase this year, and this will feed into that conversation. But these are areas, like places that need sidewalks, like Ross and Ave, or Mosley Ave, or, you know, troubled intersections like Kobe Farm Lane and Low Street, and Kent Street and Merrimack Street. So, you'll see all those listed on the plan as well, so those will be two different plans coming your way. Lots of HR updates. We're really excited about, Sarah Landry hires our next Council of Aging Director. She starts on November 6th. She's coming to us from Pellon, New Hampshire, but she has a long career in senior services, and we're really excited to bring her on board, particularly with all her management experience. I think that's gonna be a real asset at the COA. Library Board of Directors, our meeting on Wednesday for the final interviews for the head librarian. We had over 10 people apply. We had three really great finalists. Two have since dropped out, but we have a really, a candidate that we're really excited about that we'll be interviewing on Wednesday. And then, the Library Board of Directors will decide how we proceed, but we're excited about that for Wednesday. Also, down at DPS, the two engineering positions are starting to get interviewed this week. We have a lot of great applicants for that as well. Newburyport Recreation and Youth Services, we had a good public meeting the other night, I thought, public hearing. It goes back to Community Services next Tuesday, so a week from tomorrow. So, hopefully, you know, we can get through there and get back to your second meeting in October for a final vote on that order. I will say the design for the new Newburyport Recreation Youth Services Department down on Low Street is complete. We're just waiting for updated cost estimates, so we have not received those yet. So, but the design is complete, which is very exciting. CPA projects are due December 15th, that's kind of all I'll say about that, but I just wanted to get that out there. I'm sorry, December 15th. This is the second year that we've started early here in December, and I just wanted to get it out there that those will be due then. So, if you're thinking about applying for CPA funds this year, get those applications together. And then, I just gave you a lot of updates around some of the projects going on in the city. I will say all projects are going as planned, they're on schedule. In fact, the Central Waterhead Bulkhead is currently ahead of schedule, which is great. You know, Cut a Fire Station has been moving right along. We actually have a Zoom meeting with some neighbors this week to talk about some of the impacts the construction has had on the neighborhood. But besides that, the actual construction process is moving right along. Like I said, Bulkhead is ahead of schedule. Market Landing Park, if you saw the paper today, you know, they talked about the 40% culvert work that's being done. They've actually found some ledge to there, but nothing's, again, nothing's been, no major problems at this time, and we're still on schedule on all these things. And I will say, just, it's been great that both contractors down on the waterfront have been working really well together. That's the Bulkhead and the Market Landing Park expansion. There's a Phillips Drive update in here as well, but we're moving right along there. A lot of good things happening down in Phillips Drive. And just, you might have seen around town, the two universally accessible playgrounds. Lower Atkinson is going in right now. I went down on Friday, took a bunch of pictures, it looks great. That same company is gonna move right up to the Bartlett Mall after they get done down there and install the playground up there. And finally, last but not least, trick-or-treat in Newburyport. Thursday at City Hall, trick-or-treat, October 26th, from 5:30 to 7:00 downtown. Trick-or-treat Friday, the 27th, from 4:00 to 5:00. And then, Citywide on Halloween, from 5:30 to 7:30. That's my update. Any questions?
So much candy.
So much candy.
Questions?
Could you, go ahead, could you go over those dates just again? So, Thursday, City Hall.
Thursday, City Hall, yeah, the 26th. Friday, the 27th downtown, and then, the 31st, Tuesday.
It's in the update.
For Citywide.
5:30 to 7:00.
5:30 to 7:30. I know you and Sheila will have the light on, candy ready.
Looking for candy. That's why he wants to know.
I didn't hear that, interrupted by Counselor.
It was funny.
Counselor Lane, did you have a question?
Yeah, just Noble Street. Is that pulled out of the Streets and Sidewalks Plan in its own entity now, or?
It's not, so you'll see that on the plan. Again, one of the things, so, you know, again, we're finished for the year, but a couple of the streets that we did have on the plan this year, like Noble Street, when we still needed more engineering for the drainage, just got bumped for next year. So, next year, you'll see a pretty heavy year for streets, but Noble Street will be one of the first streets we do. After we do, I'll tell you, the first streets we're gonna do is State and Middle, because we'll be using money from National Grid to do those streets, and that's left over from last year before we put the parklets back out in the spring, and then we'll move to, the idea is, as long as we're ready, we'll go to Noble Street from there.
Great, thanks.
All right, have a great meeting, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. All right, the consent agenda.
The consent agenda this evening consists of the following, the approval for September 26th, those minutes. We have three Communication, Communication 507 is former Mayor Donna Holliday's appointment to Whittier Regional Volk Tech School Committee to be received and filed. Communication 508, the second 30-day extension for acting head librarian to go to Community Services. Application 163, Bar 25 Planters has been removed at the request of Counselor Vogel, that'll go in the regular agenda. We have one transfer, 170, Mayor's Office Paid Parking Fund, $12,005, to Highway Portable Restrooms to go to Budget and Finance. Appointment 436 is Sarah Landry, 462 South Main Street, National Hampshire, to be Director for COA until 11/1/2026. Again, that's Community Services. Following items are coming out of their respective committees, Budget and Finance. Transfer 169, orders 491, 492, 493. Community Services, order 494 and 495 and 496. License and Permits, application 159, 160, and 161, all coming out. Planning and Development, order 490 and ordinance 160. And that, with that one change, is the consent agenda.
I believe we are gonna keep the zoning amendment for the business park in committee till the next meeting.
160 is not coming out.
Ordinance 160.
Not coming out, staying in.
Counselor McCauley?
I'd like to remove Communication 508.
Okay. Anything?
Motion to approve as amended.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye. Opposed? All right. Mayor's update.
Motion to receive and file.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? All right. No appointments, but Communication 508.
I'd like to make a motion to move this to a date certain of 10:30.
Second.
The reason for it is, we just went through, as you'll see tonight, the first 30. We expected the second 30. I don't expect any differences in language. And just for order, I'd just like to move it to the next available date. Thank you.
Fair enough. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? All right. No transfers, second appointment readings.
Actually, we have some other communications, I believe.
Oh, sorry.
So, we have Application 163, which is the Bar 25 Planters request.
I'd like to make a motion that that be referred to on General Government.
For the sake of our discussion, I'll second that.
If I may, thank you. So, I look at this request, and I was curious about it from the very beginning. There's no application, per se, for, I mean, it is, if you will, a request for use of city streets or sidewalks, I can see that. But there's a lot of sort of language in here that I think requires a bit of discussion that maybe goes beyond a little bit of license and permits. It also is gonna require some, you know, attendance by perhaps DPS to take a look at the sidewalks and so on and so forth. I think it might be a broader subject of discussion, rather than just license and permit saying yea or nay on it. That's just how I feel about it, but if you want license and permits to make that decision, that would be fine, but I think it needs to be a little broader.
Okay. Counselor McCauley?
Yeah, I'd, I'd thank you, Counsel President. I'd like to suggest, if it's a friendly amendment for the council, it's actually move this to Public Works and Safety. They cover sidewalks and the safety issues that I think he's alluding to, that may, that we may have a discussion about. So, if that's okay, I'd suggest having.
Absolutely.
Counselor Khan?
Yeah, thank you, Counsel President.
Hang on, I'm sorry, I'll come back to you, Counsel Cross.
I just, I was the second on it, so, yes, I was the second.
Um, no, I just had a question in terms of why not license and permits? And mainly, I know we've gone through configurations for outdoor spacing before, for outdoor seating, and I cannot remember if that was something through license and permits or the ad hoc that was formed to look at parklets. So, I just want to make sure we're being consistent. And if the ad hoc on the parklets is dissolved and not existing, I do think there is some value, given what we've done in the past for approving these types, especially if this is kind of the future. So, if someone could help me remember, when we were doing outdoor seating, I believe at the time it was, gosh, I paddle in, or somebody, and there was a sketch that we all had looked at. If we could remember who it was or what committee, I'd rather we still keep in that practice. So, that's, if someone can answer that, that'd be great. Thank you.
So, Counsel McCauley?
Yeah, just in response to the council's question. The ad hoc for outdoor dining no longer exists. It morphed into licensing and permits once the drawings for the parklets were completed. And those then went to the Licensing Commission to then go to the state so that they could align going forward. In this particular case, this request is actually storage on a sidewalk. And that's a little bit different, I believe, than the actual ask for redeploying those planters going forward. As part of, just as a reminder to us all, every restaurant, we have granted the use of the sidewalk, either adjacent or in front of their building going forward. Bar 25 has use of their sidewalk in front, and they separate those with planters. We do not charge for that. What we charge for is the use of city land going forward, be it in-street, be it on the street, in the parklets, et cetera, along the way. So, it is a gray area, which is why I suggested it, that it isn't a license, per se, but this particular request is specific for storage on use of a sidewalk, which is why I suggested that.
Great, thank you, thank you.
All right, so with the friendly amendment on the floor, all those in favor of sending this to Public Works and Safety, say aye. Aye. Opposed? All right.
So, I believe that leads us to Communication 509, which is the late file STR letter.
That's been received and filed, that's what was shown in the.
Okay, I didn't know that was part of the motion.
Well, it was just, that's how it was presented in our late files.
Okay. I think that's it, moving on to second reading of appointments, am I right?
Yes.
Second reading of Appointment 435 is Janet Colette, 16 Woodland Street, to the Cultural Council, until 10/1/2026.
Motion to approve on second reading, Secretary.
Discussion? All those in favor, say, well, roll call.
Roll call. For Appointment 435, Counselor Preston.
Yes.
Counselor Vogel.
Yes.
Counselor Wright.
Yes.
Counselor Zied.
Yes.
Yes.
Counselor Cameron.
Yes.
Counselor Khan.
Yes.
Counselor Lane.
Yes.
Counselor McCauley.
Yes.
And Counselor Shan.
Yes.
Motion's approved. Moving into Orders 498, which is the gift acceptance Friends of Newburyport Treas for $17,000.
Motion to collectively refer 498, 499, which is a grant acceptance, LSTA, $20,500, approval to pay prior year bills. And then, I'm also gonna, no, that's good, to Budget and Finance. What's the last one? 502? Yeah, 502 is a late file grant acceptance, municipal road safety. Yeah, 502 is, was a late-file grant acceptance, municipal road safety grant. That was the one that's on our desks here. We can add that to Budget as well.
You got it, so we've got four going to Budget and Finance.
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All right.
I think that leads us to the resolution.
Yes.
Order 501.
Counselor McCauley?
I'd like to make a motion to waive the rules and insert an emergency preamble and approve this all as an omnibus.
Second.
Thank you. If my colleagues would allow me, I will read this, but I'll give you a preamble beforehand. I do think that our local community is looking for a statement from, from the City Council, as well as every public entity going forward. That's the reason behind me submitting this resolution, and I hope that you, you will join me in accepting it at the end. This is a resolution dated October 16th, whereas on October 7th, 2023, Israel was subject to a surprise and unprovoked attack by Hamas, who claimed to have fired 5,000 rockets from the Gaza Strip. And whereas the resulting violence has resulted in the killing and wounding of over 2,500 people, mostly civilian, the forcible abduction of hundreds of others, and escalating situation every day this continues. And whereas the attacking force has called for the elimination of Israel and its citizenry, and we know that an attack on Israel is a veiled attack on Jewish communities locally. Therefore, we, the City Council of Newburyport, strongly and unequivocally condemn all acts of terror and violence against civilians in the state of Israel specifically. We stand for human rights, ask for international cooperation, and the rule of law. Therefore, we, the City Council of Newburyport, stand with Israel's right to self-defense, and we pray for the victims and their families that have been torn apart. And furthermore, we, the City Council of Newburyport, strongly support the local Jewish community. We want them to feel, we want them to feel reassured that we, as a community, understand the feelings of anxiety and isolation that this unsettling news brings. We will live up to our ideals of no place for hate, and will take action as appropriate to ensure the safety of the local Jewish community. Respectfully submitted on behalf of any City Councilor who would like to sign on below. Thank you.
Counselor Khan?
Great, thank you, Council President. I mean, I, I was, I guess there's a, gosh, I don't know how to say this. So I was there for my Jewish friends, and we have been in support and texting everyone because when similar things were done against the Muslim community, my Jewish friends and Jewish synagogues stood up for us. I don't think people know because you don't have a mosque here, but we had to do an active shooter at our mosque this past Sunday because we've been getting threats as well. And the third whereas really kind of hurts a little bit because there are victims even in Gaza. And I think we're ignoring, and we're getting into now a situation where we're choosing a side. And I just want to be careful. I think as City Councilors, wearing different hats, representing different voices, I would say we condemn the terrorist attacks by Hamas. I'm in total agreement of, but to also stand with the Muslim community is important, with our newcomers from Afghanistan, people who wear hijab. That, I don't think people understand that there are other victims that happen, and a lot of it has to do with, it's just that third whereas that, that I find needs to, can be taken out. Or if we sent it to committee, we could talk more. This is a little bit outside of our realm, but I get being there for the residents of our entire city. So the way it is written now, I will vote present on it, but I would like to be able to modify so that we are there for more, for everyone else in the community that's affected, like my family. Thank you.
Counselor Preston?
Are you suggesting an amendment to, to take out the third whereas?
Yeah, that would be, if that's amenable to.
I would second that.
Which third whereas?
Whereas. The attacking force has called. Correct, that's the one, the attacking force that has called for the elimination. Counselor Khan?
Yes, that's it.
If I might, so you moved, was there, who was the second?
Counselor Preston.
You were the second on the amendment, you were the second on the original?
Yes.
Okay, thanks.
Discussion? On the amendment?
And then, oh yeah.
Counselor Khan?
Can I add another amendment, or would you want to vote on that one first?
We can vote on that one first.
Which is to remove that whole sentence. Third whereas.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
No. Present?
One present, one no. Counselor Khan?
And then the last, and furthermore, for the safety of the local Jewish and Muslim community.
I would second that as well.
Could you say that again slowly? Where would that be inserted?
And furthermore, the last.
Last. In the last line.
Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Present?
Thank you, Counselor Khan. Counselor Cameron?
Yeah, just, just in general, and I appreciate the discussion about the subtleties of this. The whole intent, you know, I'm not a Middle Eastern study, you know, student of the politics of it, but clearly, that attack was meant to do more than kill innocent people. It was really to send a horrific message and a divisiveness that, you know, we see erupt in our own communities here in the United States and, and we see overseas as well. I think we witnessed a little bit of that with our, our non-local public commenters earlier tonight, and we need to speak out against this, you know, unequivocally. And it does invite, you know, counterviolence, and, and people get caught in the crossfire. Innocent victims are the ones who suffer when extremists of any sort are involved. So I appreciate the word five, Counselor, bringing this forward. I appreciate the discussion. You know, I know in my heart of hearts that everybody on the Newburyport City Council stands with all of our residents, whether it's Indigenous, Black Lives Matter, Islamophobia, antisemitism, you know, it goes on and on. But I appreciate us having this conversation and sending that message to our residents. Thank you.
Counselor Cameron? Further discussion? All right.
The motion is actually to waive the rules, declare an emergency, approve the resolution as amended.
Correct.
Two amendments.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Present?
So I've got 10 yes, one present.
We're missing two. Eight yes.
Yes, one present.
Eight, one, and two.
All right. I think that does it for orders, ordinances.
Pleasant Street, 15-minute parking space, Ordinance 161.
Motion to take collectively Ordinance 161, 162, and 163 to Public Works and Safety?
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All right. Committee items, Counselor Zied.
All right. Motion to approve Transfer 169, dated 9/26, Parklet Fund. It's a highway downtown parklets.
Second.
So, long story short, is when we established parkits, parklets, we also established a fund into which the revenues that are generated from it go. This is the first, I think, of its kind transfer because now we've got to take some money out to support the program itself. And so there's a request here for $10,000 in order to fund DPS as they're getting ready to ramp up into the removal for the end of the season. It did spark off a bit of a conversation. There was an, an attached sort of short spreadsheet showing some cost. And to cut to the chase, we're not, we're not making it, so to say, on parklets. In other words, the costs are, at least by, by these numbers, exceeding the, the intake. And I guess worse so, the numbers for the costs are not exactly complete because they don't actually include DPS time and labor. It's sort of a soft number, if you will, because those are DPS employees. But if they were to track their time, we would, we would presumably show a larger loss. So we do have a challenge, I think, is what kind of what the conversation was in the committee. I, I don't think it changed the 3-0 at the end of, you know, it was just to funnel the money out of the Parklet Fund to DPS to support what we can out of it. But clearly, there is a subsidization occurring here. Whether we want that to continue or not is probably an ongoing debate or discussion. The fees for parklets were the subject of much conversation at the initial outset. And then tonight's referral to the other committee on another, you know, somewhat related request probably plays into that conversation as well. So again, it was 3 to 0 in committee supporting, and that was the nature of the conversation.
Thank you, Counselor Zied. Counselor McCauley?
Yeah, I do support this, but I'd like to add a bit of clarity to this discussion about us not making money. When we originally set this up, we weren't sure what was going, how the expenses were going to be. We do now have a better idea what they could be. I would welcome anything that would do project-based accounting and allocated labor to it. That being said, the fee was $8 per square foot, and we waived that for the first two years and put it at $5 a square foot. That's what these revenue numbers would show. It was a learning curve for us as well as the restaurant tours. We needed to pass the red face test to say, you know, do we need $10 a square foot, $20 a square foot, et cetera, along the way. So I think that the experiment of the $5 has shown that we need more. The $8, I think, will probably be right in line with what this dollar amount is. I would anticipate that if there were some maintenance or we did do allocation of labor, et cetera, along the way for this, that we'd probably have to adjust that rate that we had put in our ordinance for that. So, thank you. But I will, I will be supporting this going forward. Thanks.
Counselor Zied?
I just forgot to add one last conversation that's relevant too, which is that we also talked about the importance of creating a balance in order to support a capital effort at some point since if the parklets need to be replaced, the physical materials. So we're at, you know, that's another area where, to the, to the Counselor's point, the calculation probably needs to calculate some reserve to be held.
Thank you. Further discussion? All right, all those in favor of Transfer 169, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Next is a motion to approve Order 491, 9/26, Port Parks Alliance Gift Acceptance, 2025. This is for the planting of five elm trees at the Bartlett Mall at the corner of High and Auburn, to be specific. This was done in coordination, was this done in coordination with the Parks Commission or, or Division? Was a question asked in committee. To be honest, it wasn't 100% clear that that was the case, but it seemed to be that there was a desire here. As we know, there are several efforts happening at the Mall, the new playground, potentially the CPA project, as it maybe gets rebid and so forth. And so this is five trees, this is standard stuff in terms of the watering and that sort of thing. It is coming from the Parks, Port Parks Alliance, so they're continuing with their ongoing bringing us gifts as we go. And the Finance Director was just going to say, said that he, you know, was going to look more into kind of providing us some more information as we go. But given this, the nature of it and that it's a gift, it was 3-0 in committee.
Thank you. Discussion? All those in favor of Order 491, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All right.
Next, I'm going to skip to Order 493. So we'll do the supplemental at the end. Order 493, motion to approve.
Second.
This is the acceptance of a so-called prudent investor rule. So if I could summarize it, basically by default, Massachusetts public funds have to go into a very specific list of investments are allowable. We're talking about cash that's essentially unused at the moment. So think about money sitting in trust funds or money maybe sitting in that stabilization fund that we talk about from time to time. And so they do have to go into a short list. And typically, as you might imagine, because they're very safe, they don't tend to, you know, perform extremely well in terms of returns. So the state recently made available this provision, which can be accepted by cities or towns, which would allow those funds to be invested by the treasurer, in our case, of our city, into a different set of potential funds. Now, it's not just any fund, and it's not equities, and it's certainly not DraftKings. So it's not an expansive list per se, but the way the Finance Director explained it, it's, you know, it's, it's a more expansive, more choices, slightly more risk. But his argument is that on a relative basis, we're talking about almost no risk with the non-prudent investor rule, and just off of that with it. So the recommendation, this actually originated from the Finance Director's office. So it's still, you know, all the investments are still focused on keeping the principal secure. The original genesis of the change to the state statute came from actually the Mass Treasurers and Collectors Association. And so that was kind of the nature of the conversation. We did ask for a little bit of additional information, like historically, if you could do this, how, what would you get? And we did receive some information about the PRT, which now I cannot remember what it stands for, P-R-I-T, the Pension Something-Something Fund, or I can't remember the exact title. But basically, that, that's an analog for what we could expect. And, you know, it's, again, it's, it's not much better than the typical. And the markets have been crazy in the last couple of years, and now we're seeing tremendous returns on things like treasuries and so forth that previously had none. So in any event, in the end, it was 2 to 1 in committee. I was the dissenting vote, but it does come out with a recommendation from the committee for acceptance.
All right, thank you. Discussion, Counselor McCauley?
Yeah, I just have a question. Is there, is this a published list, a public list of investment items that can be done? And do we, have we reviewed that in committee going forward?
I don't believe we asked specifically if it was a published list. The Finance Director kept referring to the PRT as, as an analog for this, but he's here, so it's probably better for me to yield and just let him speak to it.
Director Manning, I've unmuted you.
For Counselor, so the group investor rule basically defines different asset classes that we're able to invest in. It is slightly broader than the so-called legal list of, of security names that was created maybe 30 or so years ago by the state. So really, if you look in the city's financial policies, that kind of reflects what we're able to do through the state group investor law, which is Counselor Zied said, that's how the, the OPEP trust fund gets invested. That's how the pension reserve gets invested. That's how any other long-term fund would get invested. But really, I would not define it as any speculative or risky investments by any means. It's slightly, you know, going, taking the next step beyond what you might see as kind of your bedlam funding market account would be the best way to describe it.
Did I answer your question?
Not really, but thank you. I'll, I'll yield, thanks.
All right, thank you, Director Manning. Further questions? All right. All those in favor of Order 493, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
No.
No. Two no's.
Okay, the last one is going to be a motion to approve 492 as amended in committee.
Second.
So I know sometimes, we did this line by line in committee, but unless anybody's demanding that, I think I'm just going to read them all out to you and the recommendation for each. And then we can, we can certainly break it up if we really need to. So I'm going to run down these as quickly as I can. Number one is in, well, actually, I apologize. Let me start with the basics. This is a supplemental budget request, meaning that we're taking on out, funds that were unallocated during the budget process or that have been created since then, and we now have those available for any legal use. This is not free cash. This is actually money that, as you can see from the memo, $181,000 exists because we had a levy limit up here, and we taxed to here. So there's a small gap between the two, and that's $180,000. The City Council made a cut, I believe a single cut is responsible for this, The City Council made a cut, I believe a single cut is responsible for this, around the economic development position, that's 95,000. As is often the case, state aid doesn't firm up until after our budget process is done, so that created an additional $23,000. And then finally, because there's some enterprise fund mixing in here, same thing, they don't call it excess levy because it's not a tax, but rather, they have a, you know, a pro forma with an estimated revenue, and so that's only two grand, so it's very small. So, that's what, what this money is, and so keep in mind that, you know, when we make these, we're actually sort of modifying, in a sense, amending the budget that we passed back in June. And so, the last thing I'll say from a broad perspective is that this supplementary budget is 187,000, so it's not all of that money. If you add all those up, it's more than 187, so there would still be some unallocated or unbudgeted funds that, in theory, could be used for further supplemental, but I will say historically, we've only really seen one supplemental in the fall, and that's about it, and that just becomes unallocated, and then if it materializes, it will eventually fall to free cash. So, now you have the context, so let me go down the list. The first one is injured on duty. We did spend a little bit of time on this. We also had a little bit of time on what of this is considered public, and what I'm gonna share with you, we've been advised is public, so it is out there in the public domain. This is related to the former, we use that in air quotes, fire chief is being, continued to being paid salary and has been, and so because that salary has been paid since the beginning of the fiscal year, it's obviously starting to create a deficit, can be paid out of other lines in the same category, but you cannot outrun that forever, and so that's the reason for this request. Long story short here is, of course, the story goes back to an issue that occurred with, with a health issue that occurred, and an accidental disability, not an accident disability, but accidental disability retirement, and then some back and forth with the retirement board, we understand. So, there is a process. So, first thing is, the city has been paying the salary of this fire chief, as well as the existing fire chief, so now you know why we need the funds. This money is intended to carry us through the end of December, with the hope being that it will resolve by then, and so you're probably asking, well, how does it resolve? And really, it effectively will resolve through the retirement board, potentially. Basically, there's a question about the nature of the accident, and how the disability came to be, whether it occurred as a result of the position, or if it occurred as a result of another factor, let's just say it that way. And so, there is a process by which three physicians will independently review and opine as to whether the retirement was because of the job specifically, or another factor, and obviously, you can imagine, this is all steeped in state statute, which covers injured on duty and things like that. So, these funds would cover the first half. That adjudication process that I just mentioned, is it, is it the behest of the retirement board? It's not our, it's not in our realm, per se, so they'll be having that hearing. We also had a conversation about, well, don't we carry injured on duty insurance? And indeed, we do, but that taps out at a thousand dollars per week, per employee, so we are obviously exceeding that for this position, so these funds are net of that, so it does take into account what we are getting, but this is what has to be paid over and above that as well. Then we had a continued conversation about contracts. There, there are obviously some worst-case scenarios that could be envisioned that are included in the minutes, such as, you know, having, being required to carry the salary for years until retirement age is hit. That's sort of viewed as the worst possible case scenario, and so that is there. Several times, it was mentioned, you know, it's an unfortunate situation, but trying to get this resolved. We did, specifically, I specifically was looking for, trying to understand a postmortem on this, you know, how do we get into this position? Why are we in this position? Because right now, we're not really in a position of any sort of control, it's, again, there's this accidental disability retirement application with the retirement board, but they have their own thing, and they're fiduciaries to their own thing. We're over here, and then, of course, we have the administration, so there are a few things in play. So, you have the Finance Director, you have the Chief of Staff, you know, we can take more questions, but I'm gonna continue on to number two, which is the Assistant Treasurer/Collector. This is just a raise, or this is a raise. So, this is a raise as a result of a grade change, so moving from grade K to step to grade L. The difference in salary is formulaic, so everybody at this grade L gets the same salary. So, basically, we asked why, and why now, having just on the budget, and the answer was, there was a desire to bring parity between the Assistant Treasurer and the Assistant Assessor in their grade and, and pay as a result, and we do see that from time to time. So, that's number two. It's about five percent raise year over year. We started to ask that as we went. So, number three is also a raise. This is a raise for the Office Manager. So, this, this position had already received a five percent increase in the budget, and so this increase would change that to a 16% increase year over year. It's hard sometimes when you do these interim changes, and then what number are you using as a basis to calculate? So, it's not an increase of a headcount, it's not an increase in the position, per se. It's more that I think there was a desire, and the DPS Director was present to defend this request, that there's really a desire to have parity between the foreman position and the Office Manager, in the sense that they really have similar responsibilities and similar demands to be available at different times, but one does their work in the field, and the other one does their work in the office. So, that was the idea there. We did also get into water and sewer, and we said, well, why isn't this position split underwater, as well as with water and sewer? They actually have their own Office Manager, which I learned, I didn't know that. So, so that's why there's no portion of this being covered by the enterprise funds. So, by the way, I forgot to say, the first one, the fire, was three to zero in committee. The second one was three to zero. This one was also three to zero, and that takes us to number four, which is the Tree Warden. As you'll recall, we recently appointed the Tree Warden. Happens to be that it's an existing employee, essentially taking on the additional responsibility, but it's not mandated, if that be the case, but this is essentially a stipend. The number was questioned, why 10,500, and the question was that, or the answer was that it was the result of research against other job descriptions, comparable positions, hourly rates, as, as well. The concept of a Tree Warden is baked into state law, so we didn't invent the concept of a Tree Warden, that's why there's an appointment process and stipends and things like that. Counselor Preston, who's a resident expert on trees, reminded us that the Tree Warden has jurisdiction on street trees, so that's, I think, a good thing to know. Not, for example, trees in parks, but just so happens that the Tree Warden is the Parks Division Manager. He's a certified arborist, so there's some value to that. Wayne, the Director of DPS, also made the case why we wouldn't want to outsource this, because he felt that if we had to get external arborist services, we'd be talking about 20 grand. The counterpoint or counter discussion was about how can the same person do a stipended position, and the old argument's about 40 hours, and this was assumed to be something like an eight-hour-per-week kind of thing, so where do you get the fifth day? It was stated that this employee seems to be willing to take on that additional responsibility, but for that reason, it was two to one, I'm the one. So, that's number four. Number five, engineering. You heard the mayor, I think, mention that they're gonna get some interviews going, but basically, there's a feeling that, you know, the positions are, two, two out of the three positions here are, are open, and they've been having struggles to get anybody to fill them, or apply, or whatever, so there's an argument that part of that is a salary-driven kind of challenge, and, you know, then, then one of the positions is simply an increase in order to try and boost retention. We did have a conversation about, you know, two and a half percent, and then giving people raises more than two and a half, and that seems to be an impossible hamster wheel, but we are running, so, and then we, we continued on. It was three to zero in committee. Number six was a reduction, so much like you might expect, it did not get much conversation, but it was three to zero. That's an offset as a result of somebody coming in at a lower pay scale, so it kind of offsets a little bit. Number seven are GPS devices. This is actually a subscription. It's expected to be ongoing, which is why it's not just like a one-time transfer. These are for vehicles that, and they're, they're only, the GPS is only activated during snowstorms, that's per union contract, so they can track where the vehicles are when they're plowing, but who knows, that could, you know, the physical device is always in the, in the vehicle, it's just a question of when it's activated. So, that was three to zero as well. Number eight was the portable restrooms, but that was withdrawn after conversation. I frankly don't think the committee looked on it terribly favorably. It has been, I would say, superseded by a transfer you saw come in tonight. That'll go to budget. We'll adjudicate it when we get to there. Last couple, CDL status, just another challenge. It's a challenge of getting CDL drivers, or being, you know, trying to get people to become CDL drivers, so the 20,000 was to continue that training and try and increase the pool of truck drivers, which are vital for plowing as well. That was three to zero. And then number 10 was 55,000 for a hot box. So, this is a vital piece of equipment for repairing potholes in the winter, because they have to drive 20 or 30 miles, pick up asphalt, and if they get here and it's cold, it's useless, and the patch only will last for a day, instead of, I think jokingly, three days, but whatever it is in New England, it's not very long, but it has no chance. So, they wanted this. The older one died in July. We're not out of free cash certification, so we did talk about, you know, why do capital out as a supplemental, but, and then the, the DPS Director did make note that, there are a couple of other vehicles. I know we, we do a lot of DPS vehicles, but there are a couple that are, are going, dump truck, pickup truck, et cetera. So, that was three to zero, and I will just close by saying, finish where I started, which was the availability of the funds. So, just remember that because these are supplemental, and any money we don't allocate here can go towards the tax rate if you wish, and then we have, we'll have that free cash debate, and the Finance Director, we are seeking a November, first meeting in November coming in with the tax rate, and coming out the last meeting in November.
Thank you, Counselor Zied.
That's it.
Questions, discussion? All right. All those in favor?
I hope.
Oh, sorry, Counselor McCauley.
Yeah, so, is the intent here to pass this as an omnibus type of scenario?
Counselor Zied?
Yeah, I, I just, I'm, I'm happy to do, I'm happy to withdraw my motion to approve all of it, and just do one or a couple if you wish.
No, I, I, I'm, I'm gonna make a, I'm gonna make a motion on number one, that I will support it, but I, I would like to make it contingent upon an executive session by October 30th, with legal counsel to review the, how we got into this situation.
So, we already did discuss that with legal counsel, she is coming on October 30th.
Okay, but I do want to make the funding, my, my motion is to make, to actually go one step further, is actually make the funding for this line item contingent upon a successful executive session.
I see the Chief of Staff raising his hand.
I'll second that.
Absolutely no objection. I, just in case, can we not say executive session, just a report on it, in case we're not allowed to do an executive session? It's possible, it just has to be an open session, just if there's no exemption. Thanks.
I'm good with that.
Okay.
I consider it friendly. I don't know who was the second on the original one, but it's fine.
That's fine.
Yeah.
All right.
Who was the second?
Counselor Lang.
I know on that, but on the original motion.
There was none.
I don't think so.
No, Counselor McCauley.
Got you. I'm good.
All right, so approve as amended.
Mm-hmm.
All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All right.
So, I'm just, no further business. We are gonna meet on Thursday on our regular schedule. We're getting down to the end of the year, so we're gonna focus on the tax rate when it comes in. I do want to flag that Ordinance 129 was, or an amended version was circulated at the last meeting, it's posted on that meeting as well. That's the conflict rules for department heads, and that is intended to exit committee and come out on the 30th, and I don't have, I don't know yet if we're gonna talk about the sidewalks on Thursday, 'cause I need to coordinate invitations, but we're gonna start to work on, you know, winding things down toward, you know, with, with only a handful of meetings really left, and some, a few big things left to deal with, so if you're interested in any committee of the whole items, that's kind of where we are on Thursday. And that's it.
Thank you. Community Services.
Thank you, Council President. I'd like to make a motion to receive and file Order 496.
Second.
The reason, the reason for this is, this new energy contract is the city buildings that get lumped together for a renewable contract going forward. We had gone down the path of renewing with this vendor with an old form contract, which we had reviewed in committee. What I've been notified of recently is that this contract and format will not be used, there'll be a shorter form, it would allow us some flexibility in terms of negotiating with alternative vendors as well, so our original path is, has been altered, so I'd like to just receive and file this and get us off the books. Thank you.
Discussion. All right. All those in favor of receiving and filing 496, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
I'd like to make a motion collectively to approve Order 494 and 495 gift, sculpture gift acceptances.
Second.
The, these gift acceptances had come about, a donor was anxious to make a gift to the community, they were engaged with the Parks Commission on this, for the Spring Awakening. They, they had used the same local sculptor as well, and so, the Spring Awakening, they'd like to donate to Tracy Park, and the Rabbit Man sculpture for Marches Hill. Our acceptance is of the gift, is of the sculpture itself, and we will coordinate with Parks Maintenance to pour a base for it, but there should be no additional maintenance, other than actually mounting the sculpture going forward. Thank you.
Discussion. All those in favor of collectively approving Order 494 or 495, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
And Counsel President, we are, nothing further out of Community Services, but I do want to remind folks that we do have our second meeting on the administrative order. It is council of the whole. We, if there are any questions, please get it to us on the 24th. We will have it at our regular scheduled Community Services meeting. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Counsel McCauley. As far as general government goes, I plan on scheduling our next meeting from November 2nd, presuming I can arm wrestle with Counselor Zied on a time. I think we agreed that I could have the 6:30 slot that night. Looking at us head shaking, yes, so that'll be our next.
What was that date, sorry?
November 2nd. Is it Thursday?
You want, wanted, sorry, you wanna go before?
After.
After. I mean, I'll, I'll talk it over, but if we could start a little early, we might be able to provide some time.
Thank you. All right. License and permits.
Motion to approve collectively applications 159 and 160.
Second. Go ahead.
Thank you, Counsel President. So, we had a nice discussion with the proprietors of Grand Trunk. The, one application, the, the one on the corner of Center and Water Street, Application 159, is basically a renewal. I noticed that sign quite frequently, and we had a reminder to the applicants that it is required to be brought in every night, and she indicated that she was going to find a nicer sign that stayed upright, so it'd be blown over, and that she would bring it in every night. So, then the conversation moved over to putting one up on Liberty and State Street. We've done this before for other businesses around town. It's a little tricky as to where you find a place to put them, and how you keep them standing, and so on and so forth, so I think there's a little bit of hesitation there as to whether or not she's gonna continue to do it. I volunteered to have conversation with her, to kind of help guide her, but in committee, it was, the two of us present, the, the, both, both of these were approved two to nothing.
Counsel McCauley.
The only question I have for the committee is that there is, there should be an expectation that the state and Liberty one will also come in at night as well?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Counsel Lang.
Nope.
Oh, I'm sorry, Counsel Zied.
I just, I just was trying to, it's been a little while, I feel like, that, is there a time? Is this, is this a year approval, or two years?
Yeah.
One of them's a renewal, so it's, are they both two?
Yes.
One's new and one's a renewal, two years?
Correct.
Okay. I don't know that it, yeah, I don't read it anywhere, but just as long as we're on the record that it's two.
Through the clerk's office.
Yeah.
You speak, the first one was a year, the second was two years.
Is it, is that how that goes?
I think so.
Okay.
Further discussion.
It's just a point of water, which makes the first one Center and Water, two years, and Liberty and State would do renew any year.
Okay. My mistake.
Further discussion. All right. All those in favor of Applications 159 and 160, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right.
Motion to approve Application 161.
Second.
Thank you. So, this was an interesting discussion. We got a new, I don't know if it made it to the packet, but we did get a new map, if you will, a little bit cleaner to, to understand. There was a lot of discussion about the fact that it is a number of weekends, first of all. There was discussion about the cooperation between the vendors that are in the shanties. There was discussion about the cooperation between the vendors that are in the shanties. There was a discussion about how it's monitored. And so to, to answer all of those, of course, it's permitted by the licensing commission because it is alcohol. It's very strictly run. The vendors that are there, the different breweries that are there, have done this a lot. This is something very regular for them. There's wristbands. I think they play that song. And then it goes, it was a joke. There's an entrance and an exit. You have to show ID. It's very formal. There's, then there was the conversation about how the vendors in the shanties work together with the beer garden. And everybody seems very upbeat about it. I talked to some of the vendors that are in the shanties into the firehouse, and they're very upbeat and they're excited about it. And so it was voted two to nothing to approve it, and I'm looking forward to it. Thank you.
Counsel McCauley.
Yeah, I have a question for the committee. First of all, I too, I, in general, I'll support this. I think it's a great experiment, and I hope that they get some better weather on the weekends to accommodate this. My question has to do with the shanties, as everyone probably figured out, is that our approval and their insurance and all of their paperwork expires on 10/31. So on 11/1, our expectation is that they no longer are present. So has the committee addressed that issue going forward? And I'll just use as a liability issue, if, for example, on 11/5, there was a, a great event that was there and somebody tripped and fell in a shanty and split their head open, there is no, there is no coverage or liability. The firehouse insurance and approval has moved on. The city's approval for that has moved on, and therefore, I don't believe that the chamber will take on the insurance coverage of that as well. It's clearly not in their purview. So it's not, I, I think we need to be cleaner on that handoff. Thank you.
Counsel Vogel?
Well, so I would, in, in response to the counselor's concerns, and I would ask, you know, what, what the next step would be. Normally, under circumstances such as this, the, you know, such a user would be able to come forward with a updated insurance policy. And I'm wondering if that would satisfy the concerns of the Ward Fife counselor.
Yeah, absolutely. It just, it expires. So we have a question, my, my question really is, what are we going to do? Right? Are they going to be removed on the first, or are they going to stay concurrently with this? And if so, then they would have to present more documentation for, and I would imagine that they would like an extension, et cetera, along the way.
Counsel, Counsel, who wants to speak? The clerk?
I feel like I must speak. Would you like me to contact John Moynihan and? Yeah, sure. I, I, my, it was really a question. I didn't know if that had come up in committee, and obviously, the question was, no, it has not. So I just expressed my concern, and I think collectively, if we want to move forward, then we should reach out.
I think what I will request of him is that he appear on a file for October 30th, either extension or to let us know what his plans are. And if he files for continuance, he needs insurance.
Counsel Zead?
I just have two things. One is, yeah, I, I think that would be appreciated on behalf of the counsel, or at least I would speak for myself. But the other thing is just, you know, if you look at the map that they were, the drawing that they provided, effectively, the shanties are inside of the bubble, right? So that's just something that I don't want to, you know, get yelled at about that. I mean, to me, this means like, okay, the shanties are now 21-plus because that's essentially what you're doing with the rope. I know it's not the most official thing. And then the other thing was, on the scan anyways of this, there's like a sticky note that says, "Don't forget to hire detail." What's up with that? Are they going to hire detail or is that? And I don't, can't tell who signed that, but, I mean, and I'm assuming, I mean, does that a requirement of the license commission? Did they ask for that? And will that be adopted? So that'd be my, my question. I mean, no matter what they do, whether they apply for the extension or not, they're going to be roped off for two weeks. So, you know, with that, with the chair stating that, you know, they're excited about it, I'm fine if they are, but they should understand that, you know, people won't be able to just walk in between. They're going to have to go through the thing, maybe show an ID. I don't know how that all works.
Counsel Vogel?
Well, right, so the ID, the, you can come in, you can, you can go into the, into the bubble, if you will, but you have to show an ID in order to get the wristband, and you have to have a wristband to get a beer.
Okay.
And then, just to be clear to the public, that the insurance that we're talking about is with the shanties, not with the beer garden. The beer garden is insured.
Counsel Zead?
Just my last thing is that when and if that extension is filed, I think if they're in, they're in, meaning they need to stay until the beer gardens are done, right? And not try and get rid of the shanties while people are using it. So that would be right after Thanksgiving, if I'm reading these dates correctly. The last weekend is the 25th to the 26th, so.
Last chance. All right. So I guess the motion is to approve pending the clerk speaking with Mr. Moynihan by the 30th of October.
Yeah, I think it makes sense.
All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nothing further.
Counselor Cameron?
Thank you. Motion to approve order 490, State Planning Assistance Grant for Story Avenue.
Second.
Thank you. My committee colleagues ran the meeting, so I wasn't there, so I can't speak to this.
I'm happy to. Thank you.
Thank you. As the interim chair. So this is a grant that was requested from our planning department in order to study the, whatever zoning changes might be needed or suggested for the area around Story Avenue to examine the possibilities of changing the zoning there to be less commercial and more, more mixed use is what they're hoping to, to, to hire a company that will help them determine that in order to set up what the pain director referred to as the third village of Newburyport. If we consider the, the train station to be one village, downtown to be a second, and then for us to have a third, you know, village center based around mixed-use buildings essentially in that, in that area. So we, we voted two to zero to support the, the grant and to move forward with it.
Thank you, Counsel Wright. Counsel Zead?
I just, I, I stayed for this. I just wanted to flag two things that I want on the record. Number one is, it's really important to me that in this process, we talk about how we can get credit for as many units as possible under our SHI. And so the planning director did offer some helpful comments on that, but my take is that DHCD, which I think has changed names now, it's no longer DHCD, it's something else.
E O H, E O H L C.
Yeah, Level Communities. I got that one at the end, so I got the LC. But that they do have some level of control or discretion over what they're able to give credit for. We've been the beneficiaries of that in the 40R. And if something like that is to be enacted here, it would be nice to get a commitment that, that, so that's number one. And number two is, my hope is that, or my concern was, that we have so little commercial. We often talk about this 90% tax load coming from residential, which is more or less the case, it's 88 or something, but let's call it 90. And so with these few commercial places left, how can we make progress towards the housing goals that we need, but also not annihilate the remaining 10% that we have? And we talked about, okay, if this can go that direction, you have the CNJ lot, you sort of have this, the area across the street, and so the, as a village, they tend to kind of go this way and grow out. And so I'm hoping that they will look at that as well and that those could be, oh, and then the last thing was the, the train station zoning. I'm forgetting the formal name for it, but the requirement to zone multifamily around the train station, if this could also play a role in that conversation as well, because that's, that's kind of painful. I think we sent a letter, if you'll recall, we worked together and we sort of addressed some concerns, so maybe this is part of the answer to that. I just wanted those to be upfront, so when they come back with the report, hopefully those can be considered.
Unfortunately, the planning director is here taking copious notes.
Yes, he's well aware of my thoughts, so.
Counsel McCauley?
Yeah, thank you, Counsel President. I am the sponsor of this, and I would stand in full support of it. And for anyone listening at home who may be concerned in that area, this really is not, it's abutting the residential areas as well. It's not bleeding into them. So if you're a residential area today, you'll be a residential area tomorrow. It does include a cluster around the roads that are problematic for us from a standpoint of traffic safety, and we're hoping that the zoning and subsequent development that happen can ease those concerns going forward. So this is one of those first steps that have to happen, and I urge support from my fellow counselors. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel McCauley. Further discussion? All right, all those in favor of order 490, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Counsel Cameron?
Just, we'll, we'll bring out, bless you, ordinance 160 at the next meeting, and we do have a planning and development committee of the whole on short-term rental Wednesday at 6:30 here. It's been noticed, and see you all here then. Counsel will be here.
All right, without public works and safety, good of the order.
Motion, I'm sorry. Could I mention?
Counsel Jones? Yes.
With respect to elections, the ballots are in. The public should know that. Absentee voting started in the office today, and early voting starts in person October 28th. Let the games begin.
Motion to adjourn. Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned.